Reconvene the meeting from our executive session and ask you to please stand for the flag, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, a clear call roll, please.
Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Dykstra.
Here.
Counselor Nasar.
Here.
Counselor Reese Camps absent. Counselor Salvage.
Here.
Counselor Ulfers.
Here.
Just a reminder to all the counselors, please make sure that your red light is on and that you're about six inches from the microphone because the film or the video is not picking up voices, even though we can hear it in here, can't hear it on the video. So please make sure that you have that set up. First up, we have a consent calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve tonight's consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved. And first up, we have a Habitat for Humanity presentation.
I was asked to come in, do kind of an overview of Habitat for Humanity and what we do.
What's your name?
Oh, sorry. Tina Broschiers.
Tina, okay. Thank you.
I think this came about, Nancy had said something about homeowner needing some services that they couldn't do, and I'm like, oh, we have a home repair and preservation program that we started. We got some grant funding for that to get us started last year sometime. And so, we offer those services to low and income, low and moderate income families to help them with repairs mainly. The calls we get are for seniors trying to age in place in home because they're finding it very difficult to find any senior housing in this area. And so, we come in, whether it's for accessibility or changes, but we offer that program and there's not really anybody that knows about it, that we do that outside of our home build. Most everybody kind of knows this for our restore. And our restore is what feeds into our home program that helps us build our homes for the low income families here in the area. So I guess I don't know if, I mean, does everybody know or have any questions about what we do? We've been here since 1993 in this community. In 2012, we absorbed the Sweet Home Affiliate. So we, now I oversee all of East Lynn County. I go clear out to Cascadia from Lebanon all the way almost to Halsey to cover my service areas. And so, not only do we build homes in those areas, but we also now do the home repair and preservation. We also do pickups for donations, for building supplies and different things like that.
How many homes in the Lebanon area has Habitat done?
We have built 21 homes, built or rehabbed, niner and sweet home. So we have, right now, we have, we're getting ready to start our 31st home in Sotaville. So we have two pieces of property up in Sotaville that was gifted to us. Most, all of our property has been gifted to us either by members of the community or we had did some trading with the Lebanon School District way back when to do some that way. So we are getting ready, we just picked a family and we're going to be building a three-bedroom, two-bath home up in Sotaville for a family that lives in Sweet Home. And then there's a lower lot out in Sotaville below that home that will start about six to seven months after, just to do that one. And right now, we're currently working on what most of the town knows as the Girl Scout Program Center or the Girl Scout Hut behind Dutch Brothers and the old skating rink. So we own that building that was gifted to us about six years ago. So we're working on that right now because I'm out of room. I need administrative offices and we're going to have to put some offices over there. So anyway, I want to, I want to, Mr. G had asked me a while ago, I was grumbling about not having buildings and commercial buildings in the city of Lebanon are non-existent for 15,000 square foot or more. The minimum I need is between 15,000 and 16,000 square feet and about 20,000 to 25,000 would be phenomenal that I could house all of my services under one roof. And it's very difficult to find anything. And he had heard me grumbling about moving to Sweet Home because Sweet Home has asked us to come that way because I can't find anything here. And they have ample commercial buildings and that kind of stuff. But as much as they've enticed us to try to come that way, we are definitely staying here. Their population does not, they couldn't handle having us in that area. Being centrally located here and us being able to go and pick up donations and help homeowners in all those areas, it's just better for us to stay in this area. So anyway, we have the restore. It feeds into our home repair and preservation and our home build program. It covers our overhead for the four staff members that I have that run the restore. The rest of the people that you see in there are volunteers. We work hand in hand with the Lynn County Sheriff's Department. I have many compensatories that we have in our building that we work with. So I work with the deputies on that and training programs and getting people through whatever crimes, fines, whatnot. I have a pretty good group of people that come and then most of the time, I'm going to say probably eight out of 10 times, those people that come to our facility, whether they're helping in our restore or they're helping out on one of our build projects or repair project because I put them wherever I fit, you know, it fits them, they come back and volunteer as a permanent volunteer for us. And which, it's nice. They fit right in and nobody knows anything about anybody and why they're there. They just come in and they're a volunteer to everybody else. So, and I like Deputy McBride, I work really well with her and the judge over there in Albany to make sure everybody gets their things done. And then we just have people in the community that volunteer for us. So what else would you like to know? I just was supposed to come and do the presentation about what we do, why we're here. We've been here since 93, how many homes we have. I think we have, we have 18 home repairs in our pipeline right now and we've finished six of them so far. And what I can't help with, I definitely walk them through the process with the USDA for their home repair program and their grants program or Dev Northwest. We all kind of work together. And I know that Crossroads Communities is also in town and so I've worked with the executive director, Michael, to have some talks about maybe how we can help each other with the veterans and some different things because I get different pools of money for specific programs like that through Habitat International. So I'm hoping that we're able to continue that partnership as well. Anyway, if anybody hears of any big buildings, I could really use one.
Any other questions?
One question, but a comment first. For many years, I've worked with families who have been recipients of a home through Habitat, as well as I've worked with many volunteers that have worked with Habitat and building the homes. And I've seen the transformation. It's amazing. So Habitat's near and dear to, or the concept as well, is near and dear to my heart. But two things, could you kind of go through, number one, go through the process that someone may come to you looking for a home, what that would look like, just to kind of remind us what that is? And another thing that you did that I didn't know about until I got here was a family who had received the home and many, many years ago, and now they just couldn't afford it and they were having some trouble and maybe she was retiring or I'm not sure. But you were able to work with her and get the house resold and saved her credit and some other things. Could you, so number two, could you talk about that as well?
Yeah, we, so out of the homes we've built, the 21 homes here in Lebanon, four of those were rehabilitated. So we got them like for $30,000 or $40,000. We tore them down to bare bones and repaired those homes and put families into them. So we brought them up to code, made sure that they were energy efficient. And then the other homes that we purchased or that we built, we did have a couple. That's one thing that Habitat is different from a normal lending company is that we're able to work with our homeowners just a little bit easier. I had a homeowner, the wife ended up with cancer and then the husband ended up with cancer. She has since passed, but we were able to help him, you know, he, two years, he lived in his home with no payments and, but he kept in constant communication with us. And so, in that, he would send a little bit here, even if it was $25, just something that he knew he could do without breaking the bank because he ended up also not being able to work. And so, instead of them losing their home and being out on the street with both of them having cancer and children in the home, it was easier for us to work with them and help them in any way that we could. And now that homeowner has his home, he has been making his payments on time and is one full payment ahead and we are redoing his mortgage or modifying it so that it brings everything up current and they'll just put it on to the end. And mind you, most of our homeowners have no interest loans. So it's just whatever they're paying in equity in the home, there's, there's no, they do pay property taxes like everybody else does. They do have to pay homeowners insurance just like everybody else does. So they're putting back into our community like everyone else is. It's just that they manage to have an income that's lower that they qualified for a home with either no interest or a small amount of interest. But in order to apply for them, you, we do application periods. And when we do those and we put those applications out in various places through churches, different groups, the senior center, anywhere that we know where lower income families may be. I've even had them at the chamber. We have social media that we do blast out. We have our newsletter that also lets our subscribers know when those might be coming down the pipeline of that we're going to be taking those applications. And then they fill out the application and they get turned in and then we have a pool of them that we have to go through. And the bad thing about it is it's really hard for a nonprofit in this area to purchase land. And so, we can only build one home at a time because the price of property is so expensive. We try, as a nonprofit, you have to get things that are little to no cost because you're passing that cost on to the family. Even though they're not paying any interest, that's still kind of high for some families. I think right now, our highest mortgage is $780 a month and that includes our taxes and insurance. And that's a four-bedroom, two-bath home. So, you know, we want to be able to keep doing that. And I hear a lot of people saying, you know, talking about affordability. The, a lot of them are not affordable. Most of the stock in this area is not affordable. So anyway, that's, just getting back to that, they, that is one of the easiest ways we do it for, we can't take them all the time. I just don't have enough monies or manpower to be able to do that. We are looking at trying to do a community land trust. If I can get some grant funding for us to be able to purchase a large piece of property, an acre or two, we can build quite a number of homes.
Is sweat equity still involved?
Yeah. A family, a two-parent family has 500, 500 hours of sweat equity that they have to put into their homes. So they're out there helping raise, you know, walls, paint, landscape, any of that kind of stuff that they need to do.
So if the chief volunteers and goes out to help build a house, does that go against their 500 or is that in addition to the 500?
Yeah, friends and family. So the chief can be a friend of the family. Yes, and we do, the family is required to put in at least 250 sweat equity hours of that. And then, of course, we do have members of the community that have gotten homes that are just single people or a one-parent family and their hours are less than that, about 250. If they have a teenage child in the house, then about 300 because they can help on the property. And so, they come and they do that. But we also work with them if they're not able. They could be there serving lunch and water, you know, helping people with that or come into the restore and work on some different things or help us with some paperwork that we need to do. So there's a variety of ways that people can get those hours completed. We work with them on that. What was the second part of your question? I'm sorry.
It's okay. I think you covered it.
Did I? Okay. I'm sorry. So anyway, I had left, there's these papers that are over there and you have them that kind of gives an overview of what, who we have on our board and what we do as a restore and where we're at with everything. And I will tell you in all the years that I've been with Habitat since 2007 and I've only had one house that we've had to get back. We've had 14 mortgages paid off and that person, she decided to leave and give us back her deed in lieu of foreclosure. And she's been the only one that we've had to deal with with that. Most everybody has, like I said, 14 and all but one of those have been paid off in the last six years. So it's a true testament. I mean, these people, they buy their homes, they get them, they're 20 to 30-year mortgages and they get them paid off and raise their families in them and they're putting, you know, they have a stake in the community, so they're here. And that's one of the reasons why we want to do a community land trust or something here, so we can keep affordable housing stock in Lebanon and keep people in our community. Anything else?
Thank you, Tina.
Yep.
Thanks, Tina.
Next up, we have the Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments presentation.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Ryan Vogt and I'm the executive, the newest executive director of the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments, of which the city of Lebanon has been a longstanding member. So I just really don't intend to take a bunch of your time today. I provided some materials. The Council of Governments, to the best of my knowledge, has never put together a data report to kind of paint an overview of what exactly we do in communities. And the Council of Governments, there are six of them that exist in the state. And if you know one of them, then you know one of them. Every single one of us has a different service array because we are pulled together as a responsive unit to members of, you know, cities, counties. In our case, we also have a port and the tribe. And our job is to be responsive to the needs of the local community. So for us, we have really three major bodies of work, if you're not familiar with our work. One is really we have a social, kind of a social services arena for seniors and people with disabilities. So we take that role for the state and we administer it for the Lynn, Benton and Lincoln areas. And we do the full package for the seniors and people with disabilities program. Other councils of government take on part and parcel, but we do everything from the eligibility work to the assisting people with getting the supports and services that they need, doing what we can to maintain people in their own home or in the event that people need to transition to a foster care setting, we license and certify adult foster homes and we also assist in that transitional work. That social services arena is probably the largest footprint that we have in terms of our staff. Probably 60% of our staff are dedicated to doing work with seniors and people with disabilities. Our other main business function is we service the seat for the, we are the economic development district for Lynn, Benton, Lincoln and Lane as part of us, in terms of the federal designation. And what that really means is that we help generate a five-year economic development plan. Cities are all invited to participate in that work with us and are regularly invited to be part of those conversations. That plan is the vehicle for accessing lots and lots of money from the feds as things are coming down. For instance, we are chairing right now the broadband action team for the three-county area. And that's one of those places where having that foot in the door for being the, kind of the fingerprints on that strategic plan helps us bring that money into the communities as we move forward. And then, in economic development, we also have city planners that we lend out or rent out to communities when they need them. I believe you all have your own city planners, but some of the smaller cities need our support. So we're out in Toledo, Yahat, Salettez, Brownsville at times, we've been down there. We also do the same for technical services where we assist some of the smaller city member agencies with providing everything from ad hoc, like Sweet Home has us if they need us. If they're locked out of the system, they can give us a call. Same with Brownsville. Or Millersburg has us pretty much fully on board running most of their stuff. So we stood up a new tenant, moved them all to office 365 and got them all new emails and everything, got their security all squared away. So we kind of run cafeteria services, if you will, for some of the things that we have in-house as a way to help the community because lots of smaller member entities can't afford their own full-time staff. And so, we are able to kind of leverage by having staff on to work with multiple cities. We're able to save everybody a bunch of money. We also run the RideLine brokerage for non-emergency medical transportation for people who are Medicaid eligible and they need rides to the doctor, to the pharmacy or what have you. And then our other kind of mainstream body of work, I guess, is really our community services programs. And this is probably work that most of you are familiar with. We run the Meals on Wheels program out here in Lebanon. We also do the senior volunteer program and a number of programs associated with the Older Americans Act. And we also now have a Stand By Me program, which is a financial empowerment program. There's really no eligibility criteria for that. We're looking to train more people, but, and we are also looking to counsel more people. But it's a program that helps people raise their credit scores, lower their debt ratio, figure out a budget if, if they need help with that. Certainly, it's not something we train much in school anymore, is kind of practical how to even balance a checkbook. So it's a helpful service that we're providing, it seems like. So the information that I provided you is just kind of a, granted, it's where we stand in the county and so it's hard to distill some of that down. I do have a couple of things if you're interested. Recently, Lebanon was part of the Rural Economic Alliance Grant, which was $10,000 that came in to do a marketing campaign. We also assisted the Lebanon Chamber with a $2,500 grant to help stand up an application for people to connect with the business community and be able to find the businesses that they're interested in. Our Meals on Wheels program put out just shy of 19,000 meals here in Lebanon in this last fiscal year. And we also have a number of Oregon Project Independence. This is a program that helps people stay in their home when they need additional supports and services. And we have about 33, 32, 33 consumers in Lebanon that we are actively helping stay in their own homes right now. And 80 are in the screening process right now. So that need is continuing to grow out here in the Lebanon community. But I really just wanted to come and say hi and if you're not familiar with our programs, give you a little bit of an overview because we do have a pretty broad reach. Counselor Reese Camp is on our Board of Directors as you're a volunteer or voluntold or however that came to be. And when I first came on board, he was extremely generous with his time to spend a little bit of time with me and some time here in the community and talking about some of Lebanon's needs. And so, I'm hopeful that he's back and ready here pretty quick.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I know in the past, COG has worked with us on wetlands issues.
Yes.
Is COG still working on the wetlands issues?
We are. We're still in the middle of the regional consortium is, we're chairing that. Chris Workman, the city manager for Philomath, actually chairs that group. And we just recently assisted with getting, I think it's about a $45,000 grant to do the wetlands mitigation study where we are looking at land blocking, whether or not we as a government entity or as a collaborative of cities can actually do a land bank of wetlands so that we can mitigate the lands, lower the cost. And then for, I think the vision is if we have designated purposes for which somebody is bringing in economic development that also meets a different need. So if it's, that would have to be fleshed out. But I think the things people have talked about is certain economic development or like low-income housing or what have you, we'd have some targets that if people wanted to start up a business or do that body of work, that we would be able to offset costs of the wetlands credits and really drive down the price of the land. Because as you know, especially in this area, right, the mitigation costs blow out of the water, anything in terms of trying to start a new building. So you pretty much have to buy something that exists and rehab it or not.
And that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Because we've had several businesses that weren't able to come because of the high cost of the mitigation, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
First of all, thank you for, thank you for being here and thank you for this information. It was wonderful. Your RideLine program, age group, who can participate? Also, it says here about giving, putting back $3 million back into Lynn County. Could you explain that because I'm not sure.
Sure. So we run a brokerage, which means that we let out contracts with private individuals to actually do the driving. So the $3 million going back into the community is what we are paying for drivers to drive eligible participants back around for rides specifically in this county. My hope is, my sincerest hope is that by the end of this year, we can get much better at being able to provide member reports that help you see exactly what it is that we did over the last year in your, specifically in your community. I know to say Lynn County, it's pretty easy to look at and say, well, all right, well, how much of this is Albany and how much of this is really me, right? And in terms of eligibility, the main contract for the RideLine program comes through Samaritan. So most of the people have to be eligible for Medicaid. We have expanded it a little bit through a pilot project with Samaritan for Medicare recipients. But they have to be in a specific grouping for Medicare and they are tracking the rides to try to figure out whether or not that pilot warrants additional expansion.
So it has to go through Samaritan right now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it comes through us, but the people have to be eligible for Medicaid, yeah, or this Medicare program.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if I was eligible for Medicaid but not working through Samaritan or not part of Samaritan program, could I call a number and get that service?
I, let me check on that for sure. I want to say the answer to that is yes, but I'm not close enough into the actual eligibility criteria for those programs to feel confident with that. But I'll be happy to get back with you on that.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Next up, the city of Lebanon cybersecurity presentation. That's going to be Brent.
Mr. Mayor and council, good evening. I think it was earlier this year, we allocated $75,000 from the ARPA funds that the city got. And Nancy iterated to council that was going to be used for cybersecurity. And we have been working on cybersecurity improvements for the past few months. Our insurer, in order to get a good level of cybersecurity insurance, added several different requirements or new requirements for this year. And so, we've been working on adding those. And backups, simulated exercises with training, what's going to happen if things go down, multi-factor authentication for people, making sure vendors have to multi-factor authenticate or have two factors when they get in remotely, just to protect our systems. And then phishing training. The two that are going to affect you as counselors and the mayor are going to be the multi-factor, which I've reached out to each one of you and we've set that up together, and the phishing training. And so, I just wanted to come tonight and just give you an alert that you will be reached out via email. We're using the same portal that we do internally for staff. And to my knowledge, I don't know that we've done this before, so I, there might be a little bump to get up on the curb and start running. But please reach out to me or reach out to my staff if you have any questions once those emails come in and those. those emails come in, and those will direct you. The way we're rolling it out with staff is going to be six months long, and there's two sessions per month. The sessions are rated at eight minutes apiece. So I'm thinking, you know, 20 minutes a month should be the time commitment there. And really, we can build as many layers of cybersecurity as possible at the city. But the training that I've gotten and everything I've seen is the end users are ultimately who protect the network. And the number one asset that we have seen at the City of Lebanon has been responsive users. And there is nothing too in, you know, mundane or too trivial to report because these are getting better all the time. And we've had some very near misses. And thankfully, people would say, hey, this just doesn't look right. And so they send it to us and you're like, well, that link is not correct, or yep, that attachment wasn't, or that wire transfer not correct. So it's in all of our lives, in banks, you know, go to the doctor, you're doing the same thing. And we're just trying to close that door and increase our our security posture. One of my staff members, Nico Bressler, has done an outstanding job. He has poured hundreds of hours this year into re-architecting a lot of these systems. And I want to recognize him for the work he did in that. He, we sent him to a cybersecurity class earlier this year, and the money we invested in sending him for that training was, we've paid back multiple times with with the knowledge he gained and the contacts he made. And so it's been good to find other people in the state and federal agencies who are providing resources that we can leverage that, and we have leveraged. For like our antivirus, for instance, we were able to get in with a Center for Information Security. They have a 24/7 knock, so somebody's watching our systems all around the clock if something comes in. And other areas where, for instance, the phishing training, that was a grant provided by our insurer, so it's at no cost to us. So most of the, most, almost all of the changes we've made this year have been provided through the ARPA funding or through grants or through partnerships with other agencies, which has been really nice for helping the city out. I don't think there's anything else. Trying to keep this short. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to comment on the rollout, even on our email. You made it easy, so I really appreciate that, at least for me. It was, you guys just did a really good job and it was very smooth, so.
Thank you. And I call out Nico, but that's my entire staff behind me.
Yeah, you guys did a good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to recognize the insurance coverage for cybersecurity. A few years ago, you paid $10,000 and you got $5 million in coverage. This year, for $10,000, we would have gotten $50,000 in coverage, which would not be enough to bring in the forensic scientists needed to go through and clean up a ransomware attack and what what has happened. Brent and his staff have done the work necessary to get us to Level Two, which is about one and a quarter million dollars in coverage. And that gets a lot closer to covering what our costs would be should we get a ransomware attack or something along those lines. It's been a heavy lift. The city managers list serve, there are a lot of cities who just have no resources to help them even roll out multi-factor authentication to do backups. I I'm stunned at the number of communities that have no off-site backup of their data, which is a critical element to have if you get hit with ransomware. So our IT shop, man, I wouldn't put anybody up against them. So they they do an excellent job for us all day, every day and never, never worried that sending something to the IT help desk saying, is this looks funny to me? Is it okay? They would much rather come back with, nope, this one is okay, than have you click on something and hose the hose the system. They actually, I think, kind of enjoy digging into that meta language to see if it's real or not. I think I think that's a good challenge sometimes. So thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, time for public comments. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony card. Prior to speaking, I hand it to the city recorder. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the city council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. City recorder will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Public comments can also be submitted to by email prior to 5:00 PM on July 12th. The city recorder will distribute comments to the mayor and council prior to the meeting. We haven't received any comments, but we do have several cards. And first up, we have Cassie Cruz.
Right on. Yep, you can hear me. Wonderful. Everybody, I'm Cassie Cruz, your Downtown Main Street Manager. Just giving a quick update to what's been going on and we have going on downtown. We have our concert series that has officially kicked off. So on Saturday night and on Tuesday night, we had people come in from around the community, around the area, and enjoy some great music. So that's been fun to see downtown lively again. And we are kicking off our Noon at the Plaza. Sadly, we've had some people have to cancel, but we've kind of recognized that since coming back from COVID, we're realizing between people just falling ill, we're having to pick up pieces all of a sudden. That's okay. You know, when one person falls off, there's another person ready to perform and excited to do so. So we're kind of still rolling with that and it's going really well. So and then the other piece to that is we're going to be getting our mural projects up and going to with the heat now dying down. And now our muralists will be meeting with building owners, so we'll be seeing that rolling out. So we're excited for that. But that's kind of all that's just kind of what's going on for the future. And then I'll be coming back next month to be able to give you our downtown report, our quarterly report, as I start doing, to kind of let you guys know what's coming in as far as tourism and people coming from out of town to visit us and see what's going on. But oh, before I forget, if you have seen around downtown or throughout our community, if you're not aware, there is the World Championship Olympic Field Track Tryouts right now down at Hayward Field. So we are seeing an influx of influx, excuse me, of visitors. I think Camilla's Candles had said she had some people in from Switzerland and we had some people from England. So we are, we have quite a few things, like our Heidi Wasweet, our monument that we have brought coming in, that attracts visitors because I don't know if some of our newer councilors may not be aware. Heidi Wasweet is a world renowned, excuse me, world-renowned sculptor that when she brought that piece in, there are people who do try to find her pieces everywhere. So that's been kind of fun, you know, to kind of see people coming around to our community, hearing about Lebanon and now seeing it for the first time since they had the opportunity to actually be on the side of the country. So so we have some swag that Travel Oregon had given us that says, welcome world to Oregon. And then we even have a nice photo that Rebecca Grisel had given me of our water tower. So I do have to say this, in trying to find a video, excuse me, a photo that captures Lebanon, we need to work on that. Because trying to find something that just signifies us, we have a lot of little things, like our medical school, you know, the train station. But as far as a broader scope, it was the first time that I felt like I was scrambling. I mean, we have so many great assets here, but for photo-wise, I felt like I was scrambling to find something, but we have a great photo. It's just of Cheeto Lake with the wire tower and the sun is setting. So it's really beautiful. So you'll see those around town and up. So just kind of let you guys know about that. And I think other than that, that's really it. So if there's any questions, I will. Skado.
Do we still have more billboards, A-frames, and materials to go to the businesses that want to promote this event?
Yes, yeah. So I still have quite a few more to give out, and I still have to give some to the chamber. A lot of our collateral, some of it did not come until more recent, so we're quickly trying to get all that out right now.
And the dates, if you don't know, from the 15th to the 24th. And it's quite, quite an amazing achievement that they've created there. You mentioned the many music nights. Where are they specifically?
Ah, thank you. So for those who are not aware, we do have music on Tuesdays at Ralston Park at 6:00 PM and then on Saturdays at Strawberry Plaza, which is summer bands and brews, and that's at 7:00 PM. And then Noon at the Plaza, kind of, you know, it kind of gives away noon at Strawberry Plaza, and that'll be on Fridays. And that's starting the 22nd of this month, and that's going to go into the end of August. So, yeah. Nothing else? All right, guys, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Amber Frye.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Amber Frye. I'm a married mother of four small boys. We have been looking to get into a home for quite a while now and had.
Can you move the mic just a little closer? It's hard to hear.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay.
Thanks.
We have been looking to get into a home for quite a while now and have recently just purchased a home in Lebanon. We looked at quite a few homes and just decided to purchase a home on Williams Street, and we just moved in in June. We ended up closing on our home on May 12th at about 3:00 PM. At 5:00 PM on the same day, we were notified by the realtor that the city had given the previous owner's notice three hours prior that there were some severe problems with the sidewalks and trees in front of the property. In fact, they were notified by Kevin that the sidewalk needed to be replaced due to the root structure of the trees and an illegal driveway that had been installed. We were not aware at this point that the driveway was illegal. These things were pushing up the concrete, causing a safety hazard and cracking the sidewalk. We were told that there were some city programs to help get the sidewalk and trees removed, but that we would be responsible for replacing the sidewalk. We were given Kevin's information to get in contact with him. That night at about 5:30, my husband sent an email to Kevin asking for clarification on what the situation was. Kevin responded the next morning, asking for all of his contact information and stating that he would get formal documentation to him soon. About a half an hour later, Kevin sent us a bunch of paperwork and just to get the tree removal started and the sidewalk replacement assistance agreement in place. He also did up the official notice of violation in our name instead of the previous owner, stating that if it was not all taken care of by the compliance date of July 13th, which is only two months' time, then we could be assessed a fine of up to $600 per day. He did say that if we needed to, we could apply for an extension of time. He stated that we needed to return all this paperwork as soon as possible. Kevin also sent us a list of pre-qualified contractors that were able to work on the city rideaway jobs. Being first-time homebuyers and new to this whole experience of owning a home and living in Lebanon, we were very scared about what all of this meant. My husband filled out the paperwork and submitted it back to Kevin within two days as that's what we thought we needed to do to keep out of trouble. After we moved in, we found some unexpected repairs in the home that were required to make it safe and livable for our family. We used up the reserve of money that we had dealing with this urgent issue. This was causing more and more stress, and we were getting scared on how we were going to be able to handle all of this. My husband is working out of state about 50% of the year, and so I'm having to deal with the stress of this. On my own, which is a great struggle with four little boys. We did request an extension and received one, but there was also a delay at the city with the engineering department getting back to us. And no one on the approved list of contractors had even rejoined our calls about replacing the sidewalk to get a quote. We had no idea what was going, what this was going to cost or how we were going to pay for it. We have nothing left after having to make urgent home repairs. The trees and sidewalks were removed on June 14th. We were reminded that if we didn't get the sidewalk repaired by the required date, then it could be up to $600 a day in fines. At this point, we were very terrified. We have no way financially to get the sidewalk replaced. And especially don't have the ability to pay for $600 a day in fines if we don't. We were told that if we didn't, then the city would, could put a lien on our house for the work and the fines. We filled out the initial paperwork to get the trees and sidewalk removed as we thought we had no choice. We were told if we didn't, then this fine could occur and liens could take place. We've called 100% of the names on the approved contractors list that we were given and have only had two responses. One person said that they could do the concrete layout, but would have to find someone, we would have to find someone else to do the excavation, including the gravel forms, concrete cutting, and permit process. We would also need to purchase the concrete ourselves and have it delivered. The only excavation person that did call us back said there was no way he would deal with the city on the truck route as it was too hard to work through the process of shutting down the roads. This is just a 60-foot section of sidewalk and we can't get anyone even willing to look at it. By adding up the estimated numbers that we have been given by people in the industry due to the location of this being on the truck route, this could cost upwards of $10,000, but no one is willing to give us an official quote. This is just for the sidewalk, and that does not include any of the work that the city has told us might be an additional requirement in between the sidewalk and the street, including replacing trees. I am here today to ask for any help the city can give us on this issue. It was not something that we had planned on before closing, or we might have not even purchased this home. We are not financially able to deal with this issue, and we were told we couldn't do the work ourselves either. We have tried to cooperate as best we can as we're trying to be good citizens of our new city here in Lebanon. 60 feet of sidewalk should not have a huge effect on the city maintenance budget, but it would completely devastate our young family. Is there any way that the city can help us in this situation?
Is that all? Nancy, would you like to address that?
Yeah, if if you can leave your name and phone number with Ron, who's standing back there, we will get back with you tomorrow and talk with you about this. I've not heard about this before. I don't, Ron hasn't heard about it. I don't think Frank has heard about it. So let us work on it and we'll get back with you tomorrow and see what we can do.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How old are your boys?
We have a seven, five, three, and a six-month-old baby.
Congratulations. Do you have a backyard for the little ones to play in?
A great backyard, which they've been very excited about.
Offense, did?
Yes, thankfully.
Awesome. See, that's a smile I want to see. We'll help, I hope.
Yep, we'll, we'll find a way.
Okay, last up, Marcellus. Did I get it right this time?
Yes, sir, you did.
All right.
So I saw the psilocybin ballot deal on the agenda, and I just wanted to come and address the council regarding that. Oregon, I was born here, love the state. I remember back in the day when it was first voted in to legalize medical marijuana. I thought that was a good thing. By and large, it was well-regulated, it was handled well, and for the most part, the people that were using that were using it appropriately. Of course, there was still, you know, illegal trafficking in marijuana and everything else, but you know, it was, it was, it was a thing that was there. But you know, there's always going to be that element no matter where you go. Fast forward to where we're at now. The door is completely open for everything. And when the state of Oregon just recently decriminalized all drugs, we were sold the bill of goods. The money that was supposed to go into treatment did not go into treatment. Our hospitals, Lebanon Hospital, has been overrun with overdoses. Crime has gone up exponentially. We, the state of Oregon, literally put out the bat signal for every addict in the nation to come to Oregon. And that has happened. I believe that psilocybin may be a legitimate therapeutic, therapeutic treatment for various illnesses, mental health things, whatever. But at this point, I am totally against opening up the drug door any wider than it already is. The thing is, is completely just, it's the Wild West at this point. And unless there is a, well, first, we got to get our house in order now with what we've already opened up the door to. And as far as psilocybin goes, you know, until we have a real legitimate plan to manage it and deal with it appropriately, we don't need to add one more thing. And I mean, we got psilocybin, we got the the toad stuff. I mean, people smoking dried toads for to, I mean, there's every other kind of drug you can imagine that that is in vogue right now, and we don't need it. We don't need anything more than what we got. So I just want to strongly advocate that we don't go any further than we've already had gone, and we need to catch up to where we're at now. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcellus. Okay, that's all. Was there anyone else? Was there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go to the regular session number one, approval to award Lupine Neighborhood Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Program. That would be Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So we opened bids for our Lupine Neighborhood Sanitary Sewer Project on the 7th of July. We got two bids, which doesn't surprise me too much. Everybody's busy, plus this is a, a pipe burst project and there's not a lot of companies that do that as open, as, as more of an open cut and cover, you'd, you'd tend to see more. You can see the results of what we got. And to give you an idea of the results, I took a contract that Albany did last year for a similar type of pipe burst project. Contacted contractors before we started early last spring, before we put the budget together. They said double the prices. We doubled the prices and we're still short. So some of the things we're seeing, some of the big things that we're seeing, and it's not just with this project. Paving prices, last year we paid about $90 a ton in place. This year it's 158. So what does that mean? It means that we're probably not going to get to a lot of the projects that we have planned. It means that the projects that we have in reserve, we're really going to have to, we're going to have to drill down into this and, and probably bid things a little bit slower so that we know for sure that we have the money in putting that stuff out. We have a reputable contractor here in Emery &amp; Sons Construction. They're actually the contractor that's doing the West Side Interceptor. And if you look at both of the bids that we received, I would say they're right in line with what market conditions are. I mean, they're what, a little less than, a little over $30,000 difference, which is pretty decent for a project of this size. So what we're proposing to do is to recommend that City Council award the project on the condition that we come back with a budget amendment resolution in a month to appropriate the contingencies in the wastewater fund. I believe there's $250,000 budgeted this year in contingencies. We would probably be looking at a budget amendment of 150 to 200,000, and you're probably asking why? For contingency purposes, the street that we're working on are so tore up, they're going to get an overlay after, but without any contingencies, I'm not sure that, that there may be more or less repair that's going to need to be done once we get into them. So that's the reason for that, we wouldn't want to go into it that. So with that, I can answer any questions, but we are recommending award to Emery &amp; Sons pending a resolution to appropriate the contingencies.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Ron. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve project number 20712. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The motion passes.
Okay, we'll be back with a budget amendment at the, I believe, the August meeting and we'll award this and get started.
Okay, thank you. Number two, assignment of counselor to Economic Opportunity Analysis Advisory Board, Kelly Hart.
Good evening, everybody. So if y'all recall, near the end of last year, the city was notified that we received a $55,000 grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to put together an economic opportunity analysis for the city. This analysis is an evaluation of the city's land availability to provide for economic and job growth over the next 20-year cycle. And then also to give an opportunity for the city residents, business owners, and the city council to identify policy suggestions of what we can do to support the growth of our economy. So is what we've been doing so far has been the available lands inventory to identify the lands that are currently available and vacant that can be developed to help support economic and job growth. And the next step at this point in time is to put together an advisory committee, which is a mixture of council representatives, planning commission representatives, business owners, residents, and interested parties to help guide the next section, which is an evaluation of the policies that would be recommended. So what is before you tonight is a request to assign and appoint a council representative to this advisory group. So I would request that we have somebody assigned so that we can get started on the next set.
Hi, Jeremy, would you be interested in that?
I, I would, yeah.
Did I see your interest?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would nominate KJ.
I'd support KJ as well.
Yeah.
KJ has free time.
There'd be more than two or just-
Fast, that's good. Yeah.
He didn't learn that fast, he started to say, "I'll do it."
Okey-dokey.
Is that all?
That's all I needed for that one.
All right.
You'll tell me what I need to do, what I need to do.
I'll get in touch with you.
Another woman in my life telling me what to do.
All right, accepting of the housing needs analysis, Kelly Hart.
Thank you again. So this is a bit of a long time coming. Back in 2018, the city received a grant through the Department of Land Conservation and Development to put together a state-required housing needs analysis, much like what we did with the economic opportunity analysis and evaluation of the land availability over the next 20-year cycle. The housing needs analysis does the same thing, but for housing purposes. And so we contracted with Echo Northwest to evaluate our land inventory, identify the availability of land based off of low-density residential, medium-density, high-density, and mixed-use residential. And they put together the, the analysis based off of demographics and quite a bunch of different metrics associated to identify what our housing land availability is and the type of housing that we should expect to be developing over the next 20-year cycle. Basically, what it has come out to is that the city of Lebanon has a surplus of 240 acres of land for low-density residential development, 63 acres for high-density, nine acres for mixed-use, and the absolute exact amount of acreage for medium-density. Overall, we have a total surplus of 298 acres of land needed for the overall development anticipated, which means we're doing good, which means that we didn't need to go through any rezonings or changing of our development code to intensify housing development. So we're able to keep our low-density neighborhoods in the low-density categories and we don't need to upzone or rezone anything, so that's all very good news. What came out of it is there is a projected housing need of 1,320 single-family home-type units, 643 townhome or duplex-type units, 540 high-density apartment units, for a total of 2,503 dwelling units over the next 20-year cycle. And there is, again, the land available to make that development occur. There's nothing in the housing needs analysis that says that the city is responsible for that development to occur, it's just simply saying, based off of our population trends, we are to expect this amount of housing to be able to accommodate our anticipated population increases and that we have the land to be able to do it. There were some policy considerations that would help to support the development of housing and affordable housing that was included in the document. Again, there was nothing in the policy considerations that required any changes to the way that our development code and the way that the city is currently developing. There's no changes required associated with that. But just to go over some of the policy considerations, number one, pursue the West Side Interceptor, I think we can check that box. Number two, explore some wetland mitigation options such as lobbying the states. The person from the COG had talked a little bit about some of the efforts that we're making. I can tell you that city staff is working on discussions with the state and our region on a regular basis. We are active participants in the Regional Consortium for Wetlands to help promote solutions to the wetland issue, and so we'll continue to, to look at that. We have also been working with, considering, working with some consultants who are able to sort of reposition some of the sites that have large amount of wetlands to sort of figure out where development can occur with the least amount of wetland mitigation possible so that we can start trying to unlock some of these land pieces. So we're, we're actively working on that. Work with interested parties to consider land exchanges that would remove some land that is constrained with wetlands in exchange for land that isn't. This would be exchanging property within and without, within and outside of the UGB that we currently have. We currently don't have anybody that's shown an interest to do that, that would achieve the goal of bringing in land that's not wet currently, which is sort of everywhere around us. Identify publicly-owned properties that could be used for affordable housing. We have established a list of surplus property that's available for development, which is none currently. But if land does eventually become available, that would be incorporated in the list, and the state now requires us to identify any surplus land that we have that could then be used for affordable housing, so we would comply with that. Provide system development charges, just deferrals for affordable housing developments. We have not done that yet, but that is on the list to be considered. Develop a tax abatement program, that is also still on the list. And then identify and consider a local affordable housing construction excise tax. These last three items are to be considered as part of our next phase of this, which is the housing production strategy, which we have kicked off and are currently underway with. That is also a requirement of the state, and so we would be looking at these alternatives and additional opportunities to help promote and produce housing. And so these additional considerations would be considered and implemented as part of that phase. So with all of the analysis that was done, it has been determined that the city is in compliance with the needed amount of land, that we have the capacity to be able to build the amount of housing anticipated for population growth, and that our current code, as it's written today, is compliant with the state's requirements for goaltend in terms of housing. So the next steps would be to talk about it and then adopt a resolution to acknowledge the acceptance of this existing, of this housing needs analysis document. We will then complete the housing production strategy, which will be inclusive of participation with members of the public, the planning commission, and the city council over the next nine months. And then once that housing production strategy is completed, we will evaluate the results of that to identify if any comprehensive plan changes are needed to be able to bring in the new policy considerations to promote housing. So that was a lot. There is the document that was available and provided in the agenda packet that was the housing needs analysis, so I will stop talking and be available for any questions.
Any questions?
Sure, I, I have one question, or maybe one question and one comment. First, the comment, I recognize here that the, the housing needs analysis, the resolution we're going to accept, it's just two pages worth of, of verbiage, but I understand that hours and hours and hours of work went into that, so thank you and the staff for, for producing this for us. The second piece is on the wetlands mitigation piece. I just noticed that, okay, so there's COG doing the work, looking at the mitigation bank, right? I believe that's what we heard earlier. And then the second group, Cascade West Regional Consortium, doing the same thing, but separate? Am I correct or incorrect on that?
The COG is providing support with, with staff for the Cascade West Regional Consortium.
Okay, so they are the same, or the same group-ish working together? We're all marching in the same direction, is my point?
We're all marching in the same direction.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the Cascade West Regional Consortium was originally functioning under the COG and then a couple of years ago, it transitioned to its own entity that the COG is then providing support to.
Okay, I understand now. That's great to hear. Okay, thank you. That was what I had.
Do you get any sleep?
No, but I drink a lot of caffeine.
I have a couple of questions, Kelly. To piggyback off Michelle's question there, it sounds like you guys are working with the state or working towards working with the state? Like where, where are we actually at as far as, I guess, conversation with the state of Oregon?
It's a continual conversation. The Cascade West Regional Consortium was able to get funding from the state to do the study that, that Ryan was discussing earlier. That study is going to evaluate land availability that is conducive to being able to promote and create a wetland mitigation bank. Once that study is completed and that was funded by the state to complete that study, the goal would be then to continue to work with the state to identify funding mechanisms to create wetland mitigation banks in our region and our watershed to help reduce the cost of wetland credits. That's, that's one aspect of what we're doing to try to address the, the wetland issue. We are also actively working and having communications with the Department of Land Conservation and Development to discuss the, the pressures that cities are feeling regarding this need to, to bear out that we have enough land to build upon, but we can't identify wetlands as constrained lands because per the Department of State Lands, wetlands can be mitigated, so therefore they are not constrained.
That was my second question.
Yes. And so we are working with all of these state acronym agencies to identify this, this pressure that you're creating on development or the lack of ability to create development to, to try to get a conversation going of how do we get all of these acronym agencies to, to work with us to, to create reasonable solutions, to streamline opportunities, to reduce wetland process challenges within urban growth boundaries? Because you have the state identifying, we can only build within urban growth boundaries, but I can't build in an urban growth boundary if it's all wet. And so help us fix that conundrum.
So for Lebanon, this is a if, I, I don't know the actual numbers, but if it says we have a surplus, but that enough of those acres are constrained by wetlands, if the state was to recognize those as constrained and all of a sudden we had a, say, a deficit of what they expect us to have, what, where would we go from there? Would that be on us?
That would be on the city and working with the state to go through an urban growth boundary amendment. If the state all of a sudden identifies wetlands as constraint lands, so this is one of those double-edged sword things, and all of a sudden, all of the property within the wetland, within the Willamette Valley is identified as constrained, how far do you have to expand your urban growth boundary out to be able to all of a sudden get enough acreage to be able to build?
Right.
And so I'm not sure if the answer is, let's get the state to recognize it as constrained, because then that creates its separate issues where all of a sudden you're expanding an urban growth boundary, but when you expand an urban growth boundary, you're going to make Ron not be able to sleep because he's not going to have the ability to build any infrastructure because we don't have the funds to do so. And so there, it, it's a fine line in which we have to somehow mitigate the, these constraints and it's a consistent conversation, which makes me not sleep.
Thank you.
I have another question. And this might be more for Nancy. The League of Oregon Cities is, are they also, they're also involved in this conversation, correct or incorrect?
They're probably not as involved. The League's focus is much more on legislative action and, and what they can do at the legislature. I don't think this was on the list of priorities that came through.
That's where I was going for next week, for two weeks from now, is this something that-
Right, right. It's, it's not on, it's not on their list of priorities to vote on.
Because it's in rules, not in a legis, not in, not in a policy.
Well, part of it, the development stuff is policy, right? For, for eons, the state development was, you know, focused on single-family housing and zoning, and then in the last four or five years, they've changed and, and said, okay, don't require parking and go multi-stories and infill development and, you know, put duplexes and triplexes and quads on previously zoned, single-family lots in order to increase housing density and housing availability. That's not what the past state policy has been through legislative action. But I think, I think when you start talking about the wetland solution, that's not even something the state can do by itself because you- something the state can do by itself because you have the federal government also involved in wetlands. And, and federal government definitions of wetlands that, that the state also has to live within. It's, it is one of several pretty complex problems to try and address. And I think, I think Kelly is doing a good job of talking to DSL and DLCD and saying, you guys are not talking to each other because one of you is saying not a constraint and the other one is saying constraint. And, and at some point, the two of you need to get together and say, how do we help locals address this issue on a holistic basis? This is not a Lebanon problem. It's not a Lynn County problem. It is a, a state of Oregon problem in, in an awful lot of communities. And clearly, the Willamette Valley has a bigger problem than Ontario and Vail do with wetlands, but it's the entire Willamette Valley that's, that's facing that.
So the rest of it was really trying to get more partners involved, right? And if that was an opportunity with league, with the league, then pulling them, anybody else that we can drag, you know, bring along in this, whether that's kicking and screaming or whether that's willfully on their own accord would be great. But I just thought I'd ask the question if it was something we could explore with them. But if it's not a decision, or if that's not a policy solution, if there's not a policy solution for it, then I suppose it's not.
We do have, have people right now that are partnering with us and working with us. Pandemic didn't do us any good. We were actively working forward with what's called a partial 404 assumption, which would, the Clean Water Act is 404, something, something, in the federal law. And so going for a partial 404 assumption would say, the federal government would recognize that the state's system is of sufficient quality that they wouldn't bypass their permitting process to allow the states to do it. That takes a system in which, right now, to get a permit approved through both the Army Court and the state, it takes over a year to do it. When you can get the, the one of them out of the equation, it is going to streamline the process. You still have to do everything, but you do it a lot quicker. And if you can do it quicker and you don't have holding costs associated with property ownership, then some of these costs are starting to make a little bit more sense and it makes a project more viable. And so we have several active conversations and we have several active agencies within the state that are willing to have these conversations with us. But before we can talk about the league, who is focused on, on, you know, policy and is focused on, on getting legislative passed, there's not, there's not that action that's there yet unless there's all of a sudden legislation to fund a mitigation bank and all of a sudden there's enough credits for everybody to build. So.
Okay. Good to know.
Any other questions?
Yes, and this is, it's a lengthy document, and I look forward to continuing reading it and digesting it a little slower. And just want to congratulate the teams and the groups that put this together. My question is for, both for you, Ms. Nancy, as well, is are you satisfied with all the information, the data that this has provided? Is there anything that you would have liked to have seen provided into this packet?
I, I think we're satisfied that this is, this is good information. And it is, it is useful as part of the housing production strategy that we're working on. This is something, this is not a one and done. This comes back in eight years, 10 years? We have to read, every eight or 10 years, we have to redo this?
Yeah.
Which gives you a chance to look at what's happened in the last, you know, since you last did this. I think we've made really good progress since 2018 in, in meeting, not meeting, but moving much closer towards some of the goals for housing development. That, that get, I mean, it gives us something hard to measure against. How are we doing? And I think we're doing a lot better than a lot of other communities are doing. And then in a few years, once Kelly's gotten over this one, we'll come back and do it again.
Well, and I, so two pieces of consideration. One, after we started this process, the state came and said, hey, we're going to change up our process. And this document now needs to be put on a cycle so that instead of going with what was called the periodic review of the comprehensive plan, which can be done when the state working with local entities says it's an appropriate time for you to do it. Instead of doing it that way, the state has put every single city on a, a cycle. For metro areas, it's every six years. For areas outside of metro, it's every eight years that we have to update this document. So although it is a 20-year cycle, you get a check-in every eight years to say whether or not that's still accurate or not. The information in here is extensive. I think the fact that the document concluded that there's no changes that the city needs to do in our development code to make sure that there's clear and objective standards for housing, to make sure that there's opportunities for all housing, and to make sure that we have enough land for all aspects of the different types of housing, means that the city council, the planning commission, and the residents through adoption of the comprehensive plan that we have and the zoning and the comprehensive map, we're doing the right thing. Because we are providing area for everybody with, from low income to, to, you know, above moderate income, to every single housing type, there's an availability of that to be able to do that under our current system. So we're not being told we're doing it wrong. I think that's a good, good result.
Any other questions? With that, we'll have the city attorney read the title of the resolution, please.
Resolution number 2022-19, resolution accepting Lebanon Housing Needs Analysis.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, resolution 222022-19. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. Accepting the Oregon Business Development Department Brownfield Redevelopment Fund Grant for Environmental Site Assessment. Kelly?
It's another mouthful. As was authorized by the city council a few months ago, the city applied for a grant through Business Oregon to help us do some site assessments for a property in the city. That grant was awarded to us. And so per our policies and procedures, it is the request that the city council accept that grant so that we can take the money and do the work associated with it. So the request is to approve the resolution, accepting the grant, and I'm available to answer any questions.
How much was the grant?
$60,000.
Questions? Seeing none, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution title.
Resolution number 2022-21, a resolution accepting the Oregon Business Development Department Brownfield Redevelopment Fund Grant for an environmental site assessment and authorizing the city manager to execute the associated documents.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, resolution 2022-21. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution is passed.
I make the title of the resolution really long to annoy Trey, so.
Number five, Measure 909, physicideal discussion. I don't know how to pronounce it.
Psilocybin.
You've got to know.
It's psilocybin.
Psilocybin? Okay.
Psilocybin.
Okay.
Mushrooms.
Mushrooms.
Magic, you knew it as magic mushrooms.
Kelly Hart.
So this one, I'm gonna tap in Trey and Nancy to help me through it, but I can get it started. So in 2020, the voters passed ballot Measure 109, which allowed for the manufacturing, delivery, and administration of psilocybin, which is mushrooms, psychedelic mushrooms. In the staff report, we provided a link to a state website which provided plethora of information about the uses and the regulation and the options moving forward for the regulation of psilocybin. So hopefully, we were able to take a look at that. But what Measure 9, 109, did was it directed the Oregon Health Authority to develop a psilocybin services program and to issue licenses for the manufacturing and administration of the psilocybin drug. That is to begin on January 2 of 2023. After that date, it would begin in the, the cities that have opted in to allow for it to occur within them. So that's where this conversation comes into play. There are options before the city to, to decide whether or not to allow for psilocybin facilities to occur. So one would be a do nothing option, which would automatically, as of January 2, allow for psilocybin facilities to operate if they have received a license from Oregon Health Authority. Option number two would be to consider a temporary moratorium, which would place a two-year moratorium on this issue if there was an interest by the city council to research it more, consider the impacts, and, and consider further whether or not it is something that the city would like to allow or not. That two-year moratorium would give you the time to do that. Option number three would be the opt-out provision, which would be to put together a voter referendum that would opt out of the ability to sell or manufacture or administer psilocybin here, which would result in a prohibition everywhere within the city. For the temporary moratorium and the prohibition, it does require a voter referendum. And so we would need direction of how the city council would like to move forward so that our city attorney would have direction on the type of referendum to create. Just for, I guess, informational purposes, for the city of Lebanon, there was 55.75% statewide that approved the ballot measure of 109 to allow for psilocybin to occur. In Lynn County, the voters voted against the measure at 55.26%. And in Lebanon, the vote was against the measure at a rate of 51.71%.
I couldn't hear you at 50 what?
51.71%, which was the equivalent of 363 vote differential between the for versus the againsts. So that was me fumbling through my, the staff report that we all put together. So the options before us are those three. It would be opening up the discussion for Nancy or Trey to save me if I missed anything up, and then leave it to council to discuss.
I, I made Kelly take this on because if, if it moves forward and we had them, it would be code language on time, place, and manner restrictions. And that's in Kelly's book of business. So it, there's, this didn't really fall under anybody. I, I will note that if you decide to put out a ballot measure to prohibit, Trey had a really good idea that we probably should also put out a ballot question about a two-year moratorium. That if you vote to allow it, and, and the vote is a majority to allow it, the, the two-year moratorium that also passed would give us some time to see what the Oregon Health Authority puts forward in terms of what we might do for time, place, and manner restrictions, and then have that codified locally before there would be any businesses open here. And, and would give us that as a cushion. I, I will note, for the record, it will add a level of complexity because you might end up with, do you vote no? And then do you vote yes or no on a moratorium? That is a level of complexity for the voter to try and understand why I'm getting two questions which seem counterintuitive to each other. But, but if the vote is yes, we want to have the psilocybin in Lebanon come January 2. If somebody's got a, a license from the state, they could open and they could open, I, I mean, we don't know what the states got out or would have out in terms of, you know, it has to be in a commercial district, it has to be with local approval of the city council, or the planning commission, or wherever you want to put it, or it can be in the tent in your backyard. I, I don't know yet what's going on. For the record, Lynn County has put out, will be putting out a vote to prohibit in the rural parts of Lynn County. That doesn't cover cities. I know Albany is having the discussion. I don't know about Sweet Home and whether they're having a discussion on this at this point, but there are a lot of cities that are heading this direction because decision would be, need to be made in August on a ballot title to get the timing onto the ballot for November. So that's why we are here today to talk to you about it.
Could, could the question just be, instead of yes and a moratorium, couldn't it just be a matter of the moratorium by itself?
It could be. It could be. You, you, that's, that's option two, which is you could just put out, do you wish to have a two-year moratorium on implementing anything?
Right.
And, and, and it, I don't think there's anything there that would mean that in that two-year time period, you couldn't put out another question, which is, do you want to say no now?
Got it.
But, but that would buy.
Buys time.
Buy time to, to work through that issue. And I, I also will say, I've heard in popular media that there's a resort in Jackson County, I think, outside of Ashland, that's already advertising for January, come to psilocybin retreat. Jackson County's got on the ballot to prohibit it. And if that happens, that resort would shut down. But, but that's already being advertised, right, as come do this. So just so you know.
I guess the rest of them just aren't advertised.
For me, knowing the state is still working, going through the rulemaking process with this, I would prefer not to be on the leading edge and give voters the option to do a two-year moratorium. I don't think we should do that outright prohibited. I don't think we should not allow it outright, but I think two years buys our community, our council, everybody some time to see what it's looking like in areas where they did not choose that option. And if that's something that we want to mirror here in Lebanon. But that's, that's what I think about that.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I'm really of two minds of this thing. I understand the side that says, no, don't do it. Because I remember the 60s and the magic mushrooms. But I've done a lot of research on this. A lot of my friends are in test programs with psilocybin for PTSD treatment with mixed results. They're back east, working with a VA. I can see where it could be helpful. But I also see where we are opening up a can of worms if we just say, yeah, let's do it. And the state doesn't even know how they're going to do it yet. I've worked with OHA enough to know that you're not going to get anything in the next two years that makes anybody any sense. So I would think that we should go with a two-year moratorium straight up on the ballot.
Yes.
We can always revisit later based on what we're seeing from other places. An outright ban if we want to go there. It doesn't remove that from the table. But I think a moratorium at this point would be appropriate.
That's most I said to council, yeah.
I agree. What he said. Jerry?
Yeah, as soon as I saw the two-year moratorium as an option, I, I went right to it. Because there's just too much unknown at this point. You know, you, you might lean no just because of all the other drug problems we have. But like you, I think there's a element to it that could be positive, but there's too much unknown right now for us to jump to any conclusions. So I think the two-year moratorium is a great option for us.
Yeah, every study that I've looked at, and even the friends that I've talked to that are, are partaking, they said, sometimes it helps, sometimes it doesn't. It really needs a lot more study before they can definitively say, this is a good treatment for MDD or PTSD. So X serotonin works almost as well, so.
Well, I want to be clear, too. It doesn't appear that this, this isn't going to not allow people to partake in psilocybin in Lebanon. We're talking about facilities, right, that sell it and.
Administer it.
Administer it. But if someone, someone could take it.
The law requires for it to be legal. It has to be administered by someone who's licensed by the state.
Yeah, licensed practitioner.
I, I, I take it all back.
Yeah.
Administered means what?
I don't know. That, there's.
Means given to.
Given to.
To.
Take this or shop?
Well, in, in.
It's not a shot. It is a consumable.
Right.
In, in theory, what I have understood from the discussions when this was on the ballot is, it is supposed to be administered as part of basically psychiatric treatment.
Right.
And so it's not, go home and take two of these and call me in the morning. It's supposed to happen in the office with the physician.
Correct.
Guiding through whatever trip you take into happiness. Guiding through whatever trip you take into happiness to try and help resolve. It's talked about as being for PTSD, for potentially depression. I don't know what else is being discussed as this is the solution, but, but in theory, that's how it's supposed to be. It's not, go to the marijuana store, buy a joint, go home and smoke it. It is supposed to be in, in a medical facility, which raises the question about going to a resort in southern Oregon, but that without, without any guidelines from OHA issued on this yet, I think that's a lot of the questions up in the air.
Well, that, that's the fear of what can happen and what would happen. If that, this is, this is supposed to be used for severe, we're talking people with mental issues that have not responded to at least two other types of antidepressant drugs or therapies. So it's not like, I don't feel good today. That's not the way it works. But still, until OHA comes out with some sensical rules, regulations, controls, I think we need to put it on hold.
Okay. Looks like we have a consensus for a moratorium, and that sounds like something that you'll be working on.
Mayor, I'd like to say that, first of all, I'm aware, and I just wanted that clarified in public, and I enjoy having KJ at the table to, to provide some other, you know, understanding of things that we may not get, and I'm in complete agreement. We don't know what's going on yet. We'd like to see more, more study. We'd like to figure out what the state's going to do, and I'm with you. The moment I saw that, that's exactly what I was thinking as well. So I think we're in wonderful agreement there. Thank you, KJ.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we place a two-year moratorium on the next ballot for approval by the voters.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve measure 109, putting it on the ballot, well, actually, it wouldn't be measure 109, I apologize, putting on a temporary moratorium on the ballot-
That's one question.
-in November, in the next election.
Perfect. Yep.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kelly. All right. Amending section one of resolution 2022-10 to include delinquent sewer and storm drain assessments.
Thank you. I'm, I'll go, I'll do this one. We do this every year after we've closed the fiscal year to identify outstanding sewer and storm drain charges. These are on accounts that don't have water, so we can't turn the water off to collect money. We can certify them to the tax assessor, and the tax assessor collects them with property taxes. So we do this every year. It adds money to the resolution, and then we forward it to the assessor tomorrow.
Have you been successful?
Yes, because people pay the property tax bill.
See you, Ned. I'll have the city attorney read the resolution title.
Resolution number 2022-16, a resolution amending section one of resolution number 2022-10 to include delinquent sewer and storm drain assessments.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2022-16. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution has passed. Next up, seven, authorizing acceptance and appropriation of a state Oregon grant to implement accessibility improvements at Cheetah Lake Park. Nancy Brewer.
Thank you. We did get this $2.6 million grant. Representative Kate was able to get in the state budget for us, and we have finally gotten the grant documentation from the state. So we can go forward with appropriating the money. The grant documentation does require a resolution from council accepting. So that is what is in the resolution attached, and with this, we'll start working on design and preparing for construction at that site.
Big thank you to Representative Kate for working on that for us. Okay, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution title.
He's doing his Amazon Prime over there. Give him a minute.
It's Prime Day.
Oh, looks like it's resolution.
Resolution number, no, you're right. Resolution number 2022-20, a resolution authorizing acceptance and appropriation of a state of Oregon grant to implement accessibility improvements at Cheetah Lake Park and operating a team manager.
A pleasure to move this one forward.
What was that?
Move for, move for, move for approval.
Second, Ned. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2022-20. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion moves forward. Passes. City managers report.
Thank you. A couple of highlights for you. In my written report, I said we had a job offer out to a finance director candidate that's been accepted, and Brandon Nish will start on August 1st.
And where's he from?
He is from Sweet Home. Sorry, Brandon Nish.
We stole him?
We stole him. Yes.
I used to be his insurance agent.
We're, we're, we're very, we're very happy, very happy to have a finance director in. He actually came by earlier this week and said, hey, and checked out his office, so that was good. And then we'll talk a little bit about hiring in the police department. So we do have one, one hire starting July 26th.
Yep, yeah, July 26th.
You have interviews tomorrow for five?
Six.
Six.
Yeah, we have six coming, two interviews tomorrow morning. It's going to be kind of a panel interview and an executive discussion. So those are six, and I'm excited to see those six. I'm really hopeful, and they look like a really good candidate pool that we're coming through. So, and yes, you touched on, we're hiring Mark Salazar is his name. He's coming from Lynn County, victim's assistance. He's very excited. He's bilingual. Excited to get him. He starts the 26th. One in the backgrounds. Can you not hear me, KJ?
Not real well.
Oh.
I have artillery ears, so.
All right. Yeah, so we have, we have one in the backgrounds right now, and I'm hopeful that those will be done in the next week or two. But we are slowly getting there.
And then, and then we also wanted to just highlight for you, working on some other issues in terms of pressure for staff, and we're going to probably move to some weekends where we release people out of the jails so that officers working the street don't have to come in and check the jail on weekends in particular, where there have to be checks on a routine basis. There's a lot of liability surrounding a jail if you don't, if you can't do that. But when we are so short-staffed, it pulls an officer off the street to come to the jail, and then we're even more short-staffed on the street if something happens. So Chief has been working with the judge with parole and probation, who we, and we have some of their prisoners to temporarily stop the parole and probation, and the judge is going to give us some paperwork to do weekend releases, bring people back. If they don't come back on Monday, then we would be working with the judge for, for probably a warrant, but trying to help address what's a, what's a workload issue there that can be modified and, and addressed, at least in this short-term period. I think a lot of good creativity on the part of police department staff to come up with that as an idea, and Frank's been able to work that pretty fast through the process. So hopefully, we'll get that rolled out here real quick.
So just so we're clear, too, the, if, if there's a really emergent situation, we can still take them to county if, you know, not somebody that's already in our municipal jail, but like, somebody gets arrested Friday for doing something really bad, we can still take them to county.
Yeah, yeah. Someone gets arrested for doing something really bad, they'll make sure and, and-
Okay.
Make sure they're housed properly. Yeah, we're talking, you know, our local municipality, you know, low, I wouldn't say low level, but misdemeanor offenses. And so what we're going to do is, is just what Nancy was talking about, is having them there while I have a jail, an officer in the jail, Monday through Thursday. This is when they'll be housed, and then releasing them on the weekends to come back on a Monday. And it's, it's taking a little creativity to get that, but I believe that will definitely assist my patrol staff on the weekends when they're running a two-man team, which is extremely taxing for them to not only maintain the city's safety, but also come in and make sure that the housed individuals are being taken care of. So it's just, that's a lot of pressure to put on, on the officers who are already taxed as it is. And so doing, by doing that, that should help alleviate some of that pressure valve for them, and suspending the parole and probation contract, that, that will also benefit, will benefit from that, too, so.
By not having, I guess my question, I'm trying to phrase this, how often do officers have to check on inmates that we have in the municipal jail?
Every hour on the hour.
Okay.
Yeah, every hour on the hour.
And we have to have two officers to do that, or?
One officer can, can come, yeah, but anytime, you know, you go in to do a jail check, there's always more to it than just going, are you okay? It's usually, yeah, I need this, I need that, I need to make a phone call. So there's a lot more to it.
Okay.
And that ties up the officer's time.
Well, you've got meals that you have to attend to, meals, meal cleanup. So it just, it's, it's just taking officers off the street, and, and when you only have two officers on the street, you can't have one person responding on, on most calls, right? You, you can't have one officer responding on a domestic or a fight, because you got to, if you got to split people, it takes two officers to split them apart and, and have that investigation. So it, it's an important step, I think, for us to take for officer safety and for, from, just from a workload perspective. So good creativity there.
Yeah, I agree. And it looks like also, there's a, one detective was relocated to do patrol as well.
Correct.
Looks like another creative way.
That was, yeah, we're trying to do everything and anything we can to, to assist with filling, I guess we call it the holes of patrol, you know, but you take away one, and then that area, such as the detectives, got way overwhelmed with a lot more cases, and so we had to pull that individual back into detectives to alleviate some of that. So it's definitely a work in progress, but everybody's trying to pitch in where we can and trying to fill where we can and, and go from there, so.
Well, kudos for the juggling act, and thank you to our police officers for hanging in there while we have this shortage. They're, we, we are a safe community because of them, and I appreciate your leadership in making sure that we're staffed as well as we can be in the city. So, thank you.
I appreciate you saying that, and again, it's, it's the men and women of the police department that are, are making it happen. You know, they're doing it on short staff, but they're still doing it. And I mentioned, yeah, we're, we're tired. They're more tired, but they're still out there making, making sure that things are being done adequately and, and very well done with such short staff. So it's been incredible to sit back and watch, and it's also, you know, one of those things where it's like, man, I know they're getting tired and, and everything, but they're still holding strong. So that's something to say about the police department, your guys' police department.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the report?
I thought you just wanted the cookies.
Next up, items from council. I've got two. Please get in the city manager review by July 22nd to our city recorder, and if you don't have a lot of contact with her, then you don't need to turn one in. But in general, most of us all have, so.
Can I borrow crayon?
Jeez.
And also, candidate signups is happening now. You can contact the city clerk. She needs to have a phone call, make an appointment, and then you can go in and meet and sign up, and that'll be through August 1st.
Done.
And obviously, I won't be running, so the mayor position will be open now, so. Did you have something?
I did. First of all, thank you for your service.
What's that?
I said, first of all, thank you for your service. We really appreciate everything that you've done for the city. We'll continue to tell you that. Thank you. Just a couple of items. There's a four-day music experience happening at the end of the month, July 29th, 30th, and before that, there's a, it's called Guitars Under the Stars, and I, I mention it only because it's going to bring some people from out of town into our community, so I'm looking forward to that, and hopefully, that'll be a great-
Where is it?
It's at Cheetah Lake, Guitars Under the Stars, so I'll pass it over to you. It's not the first one, but this year seems to be bigger and better, and I'm hoping that it goes very, very well, and that we can continue to do something like that in, at Cheetah Lake and in our community. The other is Business Expo. It sounds like announcements, but I think it's important because Business Expo, it's at Cheetah Lake on July 26th between 10:00 and 4:00 p.m. I know many of us are always there volunteering and also promoting our businesses, but it's at Cheetah Lake, and the reason I bring it up is because through the chamber, and they're doing a great job there, last week with the golf tournament, which was really, really wonderful and, and well-attended, and I look forward to that getting bigger and better. The Explorer Lebanon application is, is going well. I'm hoping that that continues, and people put all the activities and events that's going on, on that, and it's really good, because most of the other communities don't have something like this. So it's really good for our community, and I hope that people start to download it and use it. And lastly, Ms. Oliver from the senior center, I just want to give her and her team kudos and compliments. Ridership for Linux, as you mentioned, is up. They provided just over 30,000 rides last fiscal year, and that's 36% higher than any other year, and their attention to providing safe, courteous, and efficient service to our riders and the elderly in our community is much appreciated. Also, center participation is up, and I was there today, and the place is buzzing with, with excitement, and there's a lot of people in there. There's just a lot going on. And also, they were just able to accomplish providing a bus service, Linux service connection to Brownsville. I think that's fantastic. So thank you for, for participating in that, and I congratulate her and her team. To me, it's just, you know, fantastic to see that we can bring some elderly from, from Brownsville to Walmart and to some of our other businesses, and doctors, and dentists that they can use, and vice versa. They're actually planning a field trip from here to there, and maybe you can expand on that. But I just wanted to, I always like to bring to light the great departments and department heads that we have, including you, Chief, and let the community know that, that we have a great team here, and Lebanon growing. Thank you.
Just real quick, I wanted to mention and point out, so the CHS Northwest, which is the College of Health Sciences of the Northwest, it's the college that houses the PT and OT program for Western U. They had their, an event on Thursday. I saw Counselor Dykstra and Counselor Nasar, as well as myself, all attended that, and then, of course, the ribbon cutting on Saturday, where the mayor attended, as well as Counselor Nasar and myself. It's, it's, it's in the old Hometown Furniture Building. If you haven't been there, I'm sure they would be happy to give a tour. It was amazing, and they also have a free PT clinic for our community, and I know they have, it was mentioned Thursday night, they have, they have patients from the VA home, too, that attend that. So just really excited. That's, they just welcomed their second class. That's 100 PT students, and then on top of the 400 D.O. comp Northwest students. So it's growing, and it was the facility, to see it as a, see it as a college compared to the furniture store with airplanes hanging from the wall and, and old trucks in the, in the, you know, open area. It's so weird.
I like those.
So, oh, they did keep the mural in the back, so if you haven't been there, reach out, and it's, it's something to see.
They send their students out to Applegate.
That's fantastic, too.
They're working that gem.
Yeah.
So, they do good stuff.
That's all for me.
Anyone else? Okay, next, we have, anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Any questions or comments from the press? Is that nothing? Oh, okay. Couldn't hear the, okay. Next scheduled meeting, July 27th. It'll be a noon work session and regular session after that if needed. With that, Roger.